5:45, I'd like to call a selection meeting for July 25th in Water and ask that you please stand and comply with the
...........................................................................
In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20E, this meeting is being recorded by Mansfield Local Cable Access Channel. It'll be broadcast at various times over several days. You can check your cable scrolls to get more information as to the time and dates. The law permits members of the public to make their own recordings of this meeting after giving notice to the chair of certain restrictions. If anyone in the audience intends to make a video or audio recording of this meeting, I would ask you to please inform me at this time by coming to the microphone and stating your name and address for the record. Thank you for your cooperation. And Selectman Steve Schufeld will be participating remotely, so under Mass General Law 940-2910-5 under Section E due to geographic distance. So as long as he participates in this meeting, all votes will require a full call vote.
Shane Rico for Norton Media Center.
Thank you. Okay, first on agenda, we had discussion of Route 140 South Main Street with Norton Water Selectmen. This is regarding the hotel, regarding the letter that we received. Is there a... Tom, come on up. Actually, have a seat, Tom.
Can you see it over there?
Yes.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to call out meeting to Water. By law, we have to do something the same also. So, present and high, we have Mr. Bob Savo, Mr. Mike Farady, we have Town Manager Mike Unitz, and Vice Chair Brad Plamore. So, happy to be here tonight and to talk about the new project that Mansfield is experiencing over there on the reservoir street. I just sent a letter on behalf of the board indicating that we really had no opposition to the concept of the idea of a hotel. We always kind of thought it was probably the best use for the property anyway. Kind of jealous about the fact it wasn't on the Norton's side, but that's okay. But we are concerned about a number of issues with how far the traffic goes. And would like to offer our assistance to the board of selection here in Mansfield. I'm working with Mass Highway, State Reps, State Senators, whatever it takes to make some improvements on South Main Street and what we helped Mansfield have. And we're hoping that we can work together to come up with some solutions that help make that area a friendlier place than it is now. So, one of the main reasons we want to talk about it tonight is to offer, pretty much offer assistance and then we can, sometimes we get a couple towns together. Things can done faster and better. We've had some experience working with Mass Highway and some of the state agencies, and they don't always work very fast. Sometimes we join hands, we can make things happen. So, in the weather, we indicated a concern about the traffic. Reservoir Street is a very small street in Mansfield, Northern. And we recognize that, you know, the end of that particular road is probably going to have to be developed. And I've seen the traffic plans and some of the preliminary plans have been circulated, so we have to deal with those issues. My lot of concerns mainly is if we have to use the traffic light, which I saw in the plans, and improve this on the sidewalks in that area because there are some there that are not adequate. And, you know, the Extremity Center is a great neighbor to Norton as it is to Mansfield. And nobody has had stormy relationships, but we've been much better in recent years. And I think working with the state, see if they can improve the condition of the sidewalks. We have to even know both sides of the road will be a plus to Mansfield and a plus to Norton also. The TPC is our concern, obviously. And we have no sidewalks, not at that end. Everything pretty much ends at, what I can see today, there was a sidewalk on the reservoir side, reservoir street side. And then there's another sidewalk just beyond Extremity Town to roughly where Commonwealth is. After that, we have nothing. So, if we are working with the state, we're going to have the opportunity to talk about putting improved sidewalks, maybe even more compliant sidewalks when they are, and I'm not sure if they're compliant anymore, and improving both of those sides of the road. But again, we're here to offer our assistance and make this happen.
I did ask our chairman of our planning board to come this evening. We can't really discuss things because this is an open hearing before the board. You know, we just knew that, you know, we had the Semerac meeting at 6 o'clock, so we figured, you know, we'd have 10, 15 minutes to kind of talk about the concerns. And we were looking for the planning board, you know, not to represent them nationally here or to sort of firsthand. Did you get a chance, were you aware of the traffic study?
I read the traffic study, I had a copy of it, proposed transportation impact. Yeah, I read it. I'm not sure where some of the information. I have a thing about traffic. You know, that's my personal experience. And usually they're written on behalf of the developer. And sometimes that's the way, of course, it leans that way. Having read the report, I noticed that they were going to put a small section sidewalk, obviously, on the reservoir end of the street, which makes sense. But as far as some of the traffic studies that were done, I'm not sure if it was at the right times, I'm not sure if it was done on the right days. And I think we probably should have a better idea of how, what kind of traffic they were dealing with and forget about Extremity or TPC. And either one of those employees, I have no such thing as a traffic study because we're big talking about, we are both there. And I think it's very important that we get the correct information from the mid go. Norton Road, which is our reservoir street, is our most populated area in Norton. And based on recent numbers as of today, just over 20% of our population lives in that little part of the, about, huh, 50 by 100 blocks, back down to 20 feet. So obviously, we're concerned about the impact it has on them, coming in and going out of it. Extremity is, as far as some concerns, I'm just saying this, the traffic issue of here and there. But I think looking at a ton of ways, where the traffic is headed, playing in that area that I'm in, I think certainly we have to look at it together. I'm not coming to Mansfield to tell you guys what to do because I wouldn't have it fair without them. And I have to offer the resources for them. And we actually consider looking at some of the studies and make sure that they actually make sense. And I'm not sure.
I mean, I can assure you, I think the towns are doing a lot together. We're a lot more productive when working together. I think the Semerac committee are doing our waste warning treatment plan. But, you know, I don't think Mansfield tries to look at things just individually. It's not where things reach in the ass. I think it's probably best that maybe between Mike and Kevin, they actually start opening up some communications and try to work on what they can for who was down there.
And I think we've got opportunities, some of which we've brought with him for years. And great opportunity for you guys to have some ability to do with each other, which is always good. And I think it's going to be very easy for us to, you know, we need to move on to the next town.
Okay, we're coming here and discussing your concerns, so we're all interested in getting an option to resolve here. It's a good start. Well, just a thing, you know, I mean, it's been going on for years, but CERF has been looking at a whole lot of 40 issues. So, that's one 40 in that area. So I'm not sure, maybe we could reach out to CERF, tune in, they can, they can help or not. You know, they had those meetings with all the towns in Foxborough, Mansfield, and Norton. And maybe that piece of 140 can be looked, taken a real hard look at with all these developments going on and the concerns that both Norton and Mansfield have within that area. Because, and like you said, we have to get the state officials involved that two or three towns get together, it's a lot easier than one of us. And then we can do that kind of work together. I'm sure we'd be happy.
We're doing a town center, Norton calls it town center, really, we have a reason. But I've been recently working with various groups, that's why we mostly work and stuff, working on redesigning our center, which is our only traffic. And I've rated it out, it should be.
We've got a couple, we've got a hundred of them. Just, you know, as I say, our police folks walking in, you know, the traffic studies and all that, I want, you know, your police folks and our police folks working together. As long, as well as, you know, I appreciate talking to everybody here. You know, just so people know, we're talking about this hotel, that's going into, that's really not our burden. It's not your, it's our planning board, it's our own. And obviously, there's road cuts and stuff that we manage, but the actual permitting and the zoning and stuff is really not a specialty. And that's what Don and his crew is trying to oversee. Nathan, we can do the help, you know, sidewalks and lights and stuff that can ease any congestion on that draw and on that side.
Yeah, I think again, if we can get our state reps and some of them involved in the conversation with the two towns, I think that'd be very helpful. Anything you can come on?
I know we do have Representative Swat, Representative Lee here this evening, so I'm sure that Mr. can get right back in tonight.
Good work.
Thank you. That's it, Mrs. Jim, thank you. Selectman White.
Not too much to add, just thank you. And, you know, I share your concerns and I think the two towns can work together. I agree, you know, in terms of specifically mentioned sidewalks. If we could somehow, as a result of this project, make that area a little more pedestrian friendly, especially with all concert goers and people walking to the golf tournament and so forth. It's really not a very safe area for anyone. Maybe people in cars, it's not that safe. Pedestrians are definitely taking their lives in their hands walking around there. So, you know, if you have specific things you want us to look at later on or discuss, we'll have to do that.
And keep in mind that the, you know, the project is a special permit. You know, and it's not an automatic, so they'll go through and do the table of duties and make sure all the tax products are used.
Any members of the board from Norton have anything to add?
Selectman Schufeld.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Yeah, thanks to the Selectmen from Norton and Town Manager Yunces for coming today. I think the point made is much on the sidewalk was a very valid one. We need to get pedestrians perhaps walking to the Extremity Center sometime in the future and in other locations there as well. In fact, you've got to think that there's a ton of other traffic studies being conducted in that area, whether it be from CERF or other organizations, that could be compared to this one by the applicant. To make sure that those comparisons are reasonable, rational. I understand the level of skepticism and I appreciate it, but I think we should be able to benchmark the study provided by the applicant with CERF or other studies in the area to see whether they're near or are or crazy in that regard. So, no, thank you very much for coming in. Yeah, this is unlike the ice cream factory, you guys got it, we get a whole town. You know, it's nice to work together to make these things happen. Thank you.
That being said, this item is over with. We are moving on to our Semerac presentation. You guys want to walk the stage faster?
They are.
Are we moving out of the audience?
And everything else is on the floor. A lot of them are using the screen.
If I can just make a announcement, if any selection from Eastern are here, we don't need to have pictures of you, so Perry would be able to recognize you. So if you do have any comments, you know, what's the Semerac presentation is going on, if you can, before you speak, just first take your name, then you're going to make it.
Good evening. I want to call this meeting of the Semerac Board of Directors for Water. First order of business is to recognize the various boards of selection who are here tonight. And if I could have the various boards stand and lead in calling meetings of water, they're probably the best in the quarter business right now. So, if I could have the town of Mansfield already called, called a meeting for water, and I believe Norton has as well. So Foxborough, could you stand for this calling meeting for water, please?
Yes, does it matter?
Does it matter?
All right, move to call Foxborough.
And Eastern.
I move to stop the, for the words 147.
Second.
All clear.
All right, so thank you everyone for being here and joining us. The last time we were here in this room, I believe we actually formally started this organization under Semerac. I don't think we even had a name at that time. I think it was just four towns forming ourselves into a group that we referred to as a Regional Dispatch Committee. And at that point, we formally got together and then started working on a lot of details, put together an agreement, and all four boards wanted to move this bench together unanimously, which is unprecedented in my history of working in government. So I want to thank all of you for being here and supporting our efforts for what we've put together to this point. We've come a long way in the last time we've talked. We now have formally, we have hired the formal executive director, Rob Bedone, who will take a full presentation to all of you in just a few minutes about where we've come and what we've been working on for the past several months and actually years now. Actually, members of our committee have changed during that period of time. And I'm sure members of both of the boards of selection have changed as well during that same period of time as well. So, this will be an update for all of you. And this information will primarily just bring you up to speed as to what we've done and where we've come so far in the last several months of our work, work in general. So, without further ado, I'd like to introduce Rob Bedone. Rob Bedone is now our official executive director for Semerac. And he is, he came to us from the city of Chelsea, was the deputy director of the 911 Center there in the city of Chelsea for several years. And I have to tell you that we're all very, very pleased and enthusiastic about the work that he's done for us. I can tell you, we wouldn't be half the place we were right now without his work and the things we've accomplished for us. So, we're grateful for his work and this pile to a load.
Thank you, Mr. Keegan. Thank you, Vice Selectmen, for joining us. I'm going to try to keep this as brief as possible, but there's a tremendous amount of information that we have and like to share in a high level kind of overview. So first things first, let's go back in time, kind of talk about the district and how we formed and the history thus far. Quick timeline, another timeline. Try again, all right. 2017, the district was formed under Mass General Law 6A. The district is a former, a separate and formalized municipal body formed under 6A. In 2017, after an application to the state 911 department, the district received a $1.5 million grant out of search warrant money. And it's the first in the project's brand award. It's the first phase of that. Eleven, 2017, I came aboard as the executive director. And about the same time, we, the district has identified a secondary candidate site for the Public Safety Answering Point, also known as a PSAP. And if I use that term, I apologize, I speak in four-letter acronyms. But the PSAP of the 911 Center, we found an additional really promising site that we commissioned an assessment of. Recently, we received back that the report from that study, it said that this is not only a great facility, but it's highly advantageous to cite the Public Safety Answering Point, the 911 Center at this facility. And the District Board of Directors has voted to designate that as the most advantageous and the most desirable spot to cite the location. That's the district history in a nutshell. Our structure, we're formed under 6A, like I said. We're a public employer, body politic and corporate. We're separate, but a team with the four towns. And we're governed by a board of directors. The board of directors is made up of the chief administrative officers from the four towns, so the board's, the town's town manager or town administrator respectively. We have several authorities under that law, some of which being up here, adopt the name CL, construct and site an 911 center, purchase land and buildings, employ an executive director, engage legal counsel, adopt a budget, enter into contracts. The general authorities found in those municipal bodies, there's many elders just administrative. Now to get into the meat and potatoes, why Semerac came into existence and why we're moving forward. I have a couple of short videos just to kind of, they better explain the whole national project for Next Generation 911 and what the future of 911 and the entire nation looks like.
Improved interoperability with first responders. For more than four decades, the public has turned to 911 for help during emergencies, and we've always been there. Basic 911 technology is essentially the same today as it was 40 years ago. But along the way, we've made some enhancements to the system to accommodate new technologies like cell phones, location tracking, and now texting to 911. But that's getting harder to do. Technology is constantly evolving, now faster than ever before. And as the world adapts to keep up, it's our duty to keep up as well. Why? Because people expect 911 to work more than or less. They assume that they can reach 911 via text, picture, or video messaging, and they expect to get help quickly from any device at any time. It's time to make that concept a reality. Next Generation 911 transitions us from yesterday's technology to a faster, more flexible, resilient, and scalable system, enabling 911 to keep up in the future. So what is NG 911? In short, it's an IP-based system that allows information to flow seamlessly across the 911 system, from the public to first responders and beyond. It's much more than just new computers. NG 911 is an evolving system of hardware, software, standards, policies, and training that will eventually lead to safer, faster, and more informed responses. It provides improved interoperability with first responders, sharing life-saving information instantly. It's the most efficient backup plan to make sure all calls are answered when there's a call overload, power outage, or a natural disaster. It's better services to the public and more ways to access help through 911, such as text, video, automatic crash notification, and more. And emergency responders say it will provide the most accurate information about the situation, allowing them to not only save lives, but to do their jobs more effectively. Saving lives, gaining efficiencies, adapting to the future. That's what NG 911 does. NG 911 is fundamentally about sharing information with others. That can only happen with a plan. Formal transition plans address governance and standards development, update existing laws, standardize systems and training, and identify funding options. Many states have already developed plans and are adopting components of NG 911. Working together, each state, region, county, and city has the power to determine how to make its transition to NG 911. So what's your role? First responders, legislators, and 911 system employees will each play a role in making NG 911 happen. Through collaboration and education, we can ensure this new system will best serve our communities. Learn more about how you can help by getting involved in the conversation about Next Generation 911 today.
All right, so that was a brief presentation that was developed by the Department of Transportation, the Federal Department of Transportation. Explaining the 911, Next Gen 911 project. Many states across the United States are struggling to deploy Next Generation 911. Commonwealth, Massachusetts just finished their rollout of the technology, NG 911. So every Public Safety Answering Point, 911 Center at the Commonwealth has Next Generation technology in the actual 911 centers. Unfortunately, the staffing models and the way we do business over the past 50 years has not changed. So we're unable to use those capabilities to their full extent. So with NG 911 comes texting to 911, which is not being accepted in the Commonwealth right now, but it's being tested. They're expecting to roll that out in the next year or so. With texting to 911 comes a whole host of different and new ways of taking 911 calls, and it really, really changes the way we do business. Just think about having a conversation with somebody on the phone versus someone via text message. It drags out the text, it drags out the conversation a lot longer. Our ways of collecting the data, gleaning the information we can of it, and digesting, getting into the first responders changes in a way that really, we don't have a sound understanding of how that's going to change because it's new across the entire world. Pictures and videos of 911 are coming soon after that, and that just adds another layer of how are we getting that information? Who's digesting it? Who's looking at it for, you know, response intelligence and getting into the field responders? And how are we back calling those pictures to the people in the field to actually get the information they need in their hands? And the biggest and most prevalent and most discussed feature of Next Generation 911 is the ability to take wireless calls directly. Over the past 50 years, we went from calling a seven-digit phone number to 911, to enhance 911, and all that really did was tack a super caller ID onto it with some geographical location. NG 911 is able to, we're able to draw geofences and say, hey, I'm calling from my cellphone. Cellphones are 70% of the call volume now. I'm in Mansfield, I'm 10 feet within my cellphone's ping location and routed directly to the local PSAP. Unfortunately, we don't have the depth of staff right now to handle the 250% increase in call volume we expect to wireless direct. So let me just, I want to explain a little bit how a wireless call, a cellphone call works today. Today, if you have an emergency, be it a car fire, law enforcement, crime progress, a medical emergency, you call 911. On your cellphone generally is how these links come into the 911 center, 70% of the time. We are able to geolocate you with the NG 911. Unfortunately, the way the system is deployed now is going to the Mass State Police or now the Mass State 911 Department is taking over the wireless centers. The wireless centers were built in response to the inability to upgrade the 911 system to take these wireless calls direct. So they put a person in place of technology. So when you call 911, you talk to a person who asks you, they say, 911, where's your emergency? When you call 911, you call 911, you don't call a specific town. It's supposed to be an organic thing where you call 911, you get help agnostic to where you are. But, so that needs some human interaction. Somebody needs to ask you what your basic emergency is and where you are. And based on that information, they need to forward you to another PSAP, which is the local PSAP. This is the model we're in today. Again, once you get there, the conversation starts again. 911, where's your emergency? Usually, these are cold transfers or the telecommunicator taking the initial call, we'll give a brief, but it still takes time to get through that. That kind of, that demarks where the 911 kind of stops or where the 911 system takes over. So, once that call gets into the local PSAP or the local 911 Center where they're actually deploying assets, they need to diagnose and glean the information, they need to send the appropriate resources. So that takes a telecommunicator. And once they determine that they need a certain response, let's say in this case, a fire truck, they'll dispatch that asset. They'll notify the responders, say, you have an emergency, it's here, I get them going. In this area of the country, it's common practice, and it's just the way the system's built, that if, let's say Mansfield has three calls before your 911 call comes in, they might not have a resource to send to you. That happens all the time, and there's a policy procedure built into that. What happens today is if Mansfield receives this call and they don't have assets available, they'll call their partners in the neighboring town. So let's say Foxborough. They'll say, hey, Foxborough, you have, that resource is not available. Hey, Foxborough, do you have a fire truck available? Foxborough says, yeah, sure. They have to brief them. It's an 82-year-old male with chest pain at this location, this is their callback number, the backdoor code is 1234, and they're, all this other stuff. So, as long as Foxborough has a resource, and if Foxborough says no, then they got to start over with Norton. So there's, obviously, there's a lot of time built into this, especially during our busy periods, and all the towns' busy periods kind of line up. You get kind of a perfect storm of delaying a call. We'll get you help, but it's going to take a lot longer than it should. So after that all happens, the receiving agency, let's say Foxborough at this point, has to brief the responders, and they have to get on the road and drive to where you are. Now, this, the reason that wireless direct has such an increase in call volume is because of car fires, car accidents, fires, public incidents, more than one person calls 911. You don't have a road call, say, hey, I call 911, everyone else stand down. Everyone's calling. So you get inundated. Right now, we don't have the depth of staff to handle that. Generally, two, maybe one person and a nine Generally, two, maybe one person in a 911 center in these four towns right now, two calls, and we're TKO. So we don't have that depth of staff. It's no fault of the telecommunicators to stand on there, it's just the way the model is, it's outdated, and it just doesn't accommodate these kinds of responses. So let's fast forward, hopefully, a year to when CEMR is up and running. Same incident comes in, same caller, we geolocate their location, it falls within our boundaries, 911, where's your emergency? You're talking to the telecommunicator. My staff, who is taking the call directly, cut out the middleman between state police or the wireless center. So they're able to do the same thing. They're able to diagnose, determine which resources are available. Now, let's say it's the same busy day, same time, Mansfield doesn't have an asset available. So, that's Mansfield's truck, it's not available, they have three calls outrating. At the rec, we're going to have four towns initially worth of fire trucks, and instead of calling someone, I say, on the telecommunicator, say, oh, I have Foxborough's trucks available. So these are out of service, and I just sent it. It's done. So we just, just by regionalizing, sharing resources, getting everything in the same room, increasing our depth of staff, we're able to cut down minutes, truly minutes, and when I say minutes save lives, it's not hyperbole, it really means minutes save lives. And I'm not talking about one or two minutes, this can take, this can really protract out. This is a better way of doing business, and this is one of the benefits, one of the many benefits of regionalizing. And we can handle all those other people who like to call 911 and just, we're able to, right now, the state police or the wireless center plays goalkeeper. If everyone in this room calls 911, they'll screen it, they'll talk to you quickly. If you have new information, if they can get that idea in the first few seconds, they'll pass it through. Other than that, they disconnect the call. Now, the guy with the gray haircut with the glasses on, if he has information that he wasn't able to explain right away, it's not making it all the way to the PSAT because it's getting disconnected. So all that stuff will come with it. But we have to prepare for that extra call volume. The next portion of, does anyone have any questions about the wireless direct and the current model of 911? Awesome. So, as technology evolves, and it evolves at light speed now, first responders are finally getting up to speed. First responder technology, it's mission critical, it's life-saving, life-critical equipment. The Department of Homeland Security and fire and police departments across the country have really prioritized saying, we need to get this data in our hands instead of getting it in a third party. So there's a tremendous amount of new technology being developed now. And this is a brief video from DHS regarding that technology.
We respond to a lot of 911 calls every day, and things really need to work. There's a lot of running messages back and forth between the folks that are on scene command to kind of know what the various services are doing, what their status is. If we were able to, you know, track that using some technology tools, those on-scene commanders would know what's going on inherently.
Baby is always a priority. We go into some of these high-rise buildings and the basements, and we're investigating things which sometimes are the most dangerous places to be, and we don't have communication. That's a tough, tough spot you're in.
The Next Generation First Responder Apex Project is a effort where we're trying to bring together all of our research and development investments in order to ensure that the future first responder is protected against all the hazards that they face during their job, that they're connected to their peers, to their commanders, and to the citizens that they need support through their radios, smartphones, other devices, including the future of public safety broadband, and they're fully aware, they have the information that they need to do their job.
Going through a building, being able to track where the firefighters are in the building, so if you do have a mayday, that we're able to respond to that and know exactly, pinpoint exactly where that firefighter is down.
Not only do I want to know where they are, I want the officers on the street to have the ability to have good situational awareness. My goal here is that the officer doesn't take eyes off what they're looking at. Could you get a heads-up display? Couldn't you get something in that officer's line of vision that would continue to bring that information up as they go? In the best world, if I could put sensors on them, I would look at something that tells me about, obviously, the most, I don't know, the chem bio threats, the gas threats. I would be very interested in having some kind of sensor that allows us to identify explosive devices, or can trace analysis in the air for, you know, suicide bombers or some of the stuff that our officers are more likely to face. If you don't know the twenty-seven different talk groups, and you don't know the twenty-seven channels within those twenty-seven different talk groups, it can be somewhat cumbersome if you're not really used to it. So a better way it could be managed through Emergency Communications Center, that when we have an event go on, they know which things that they're going to pass through immediately.
When the boots hit the ground on the scene, if a police officer has a tactical picture of where an active shooter is, they'll know where vector the response is. A firefighter knows what side of the house the fire is on, where the exposure is on, they'll know where the engines and hoses. It's very important to be able to control an incident, not just respond to it.
The Next Generation First Responder Apex Project is about supporting the mission of the public safety community. This is their mission. Our job is to understand what they need and support them. They need your input, so we make sure we get that right.
S and T's role is really going to be a focus on how do these different components, like wearables, computing, sensing, communications, visualization, how do they plug in and interact with one another? It allows for responders to be able to procure equipment that they know will work with the other pieces of equipment that they have.
Probably one of the most important things S and T is helping in here is creating solutions, not only that public safety can use, but with the leverage that the federal government has creating solutions we can afford. The overarching goal for this program, and I think most folks would agree, is saving lives. How do we give responders the tools to save lives, and how do we keep responders safe doing it? And as a responder for many years, I don't think there's any better goal out there.
So this, this technology, every, every time we bolt on technology in public safety, it has to centralize and pivot against something, and that something is the Emergency Communications Center. We've been, we've stumbled recently for deploying new technology that's really affordable and is prevalent now because we have no place to centralize it in a 911 center. They're just overloaded as it is today. We can't bolt on anymore to these guys, they're overloaded, saturated. This is going from sonography, we're taking sonograms, that used to be massive machines that were deployed, there's a department within the district who's deploying this in ambulances, hand-held devices, to simple things like if we have an Amber Alert, if we have a small child who's missing, we have no way of getting those pictures to first responders. What happens is that the telecommunicator takes a picture with their phone and text messages it to the first responders. It's just not appropriate, it's inappropriate. There's no excuse for us not to be able to get that information out to first responders. The technology's there, it's becoming very affordable, it's becoming right off the shelf, but we need to be prepared to be able to handle that data, we need to be able to push data to these first responders at the demand that they're, they need. So some key results, some, what does this mean for us? There's going to be more data receiving capabilities for first responders. The iPhone was a huge step, we're looking light-years ahead of that. There's going to be a lot more data back and forth between the 911 center and the first responders, and more lifesaving data exchanged back and forth, like I said. And the big thing is it's going to be smoother and more efficient collaboration to get those lifes, that lifesaving information to the people who can actually save their lives. It's huge. And there's no reason that we should never be able to, we should never have a reason or have to explain why we couldn't get data that was readily apparent to first responders. And that's what we're facing right now, we just don't have the means to get there. So, we talked about NG 911, which is how the public gets into the 911 center, talks to us. We talked about the data, the endpoints that the first responders are expected to use over the next few years. We need to kind of fill in the in-between, how's it getting there, what's the strength between the cans, and that's FirstNet. So a quick video, last video I promised, about FirstNet. This presentation was not backhauled on FirstNet.
First responders are on the front line of our safety and security. Lives depend on their ability to communicate. FirstNet is developing a wireless network just for them, to modernize their communications and keep them connected every day and during every emergency. FirstNet was born out of the 9/11 Commission recommendation to enhance communications used by fire, police, and EMS. This united the public safety community, which pushed for their own communications network. As a result of their advocacy, Congress created FirstNet as the focal point for the first nationwide public safety broadband network. The network will put advanced technologies, applications, and devices into the hands of first responders to help them save lives and protect communities.
FirstNet represents a way for us to exchange information in a way, in a speed, and with a reliability that we've never even had available to us before.
The system that we propose, like FirstNet, that's going to be huge in our ability to get that data back and forth without having to worry about the public's need for data exchange as well.
So we're looking forward to the day when public safety is able to do the work really in throttle, no matter where we are on the network.
We've got to make sure that when that police officer, first responder needs information, no matter where it is in your location, it's got to be available, it's got to be available right then. That's why FirstNet is so important.
We're excited about FirstNet because of the dedicated public safety spectrum that's going to be available to us in the event of something catastrophic happens.
FirstNet is led by a board of directors that understands and represents public safety and has expertise in technology and working networks. To design the network, FirstNet is taking a for-public safety, by-public safety approach, so that it provides responders with the coverage, capacity, security, interoperability, and quality of service they need to communicate and share information. Also, FirstNet is harnessing the power of the private sector to build and operate the network. This business model will deliver technology and innovation over the network for years to come, with no additional funding needed for deployment and operation.
If you think about what FirstNet is, it's the first product of this magnitude and of this capability nationwide for our country. So this is a very important infrastructure project for public safety. I think people were insightful enough to see that this needed to be a public-private partnership, because you needed to bring technology and innovation that is inherent in the private sector, along with getting the needs of public safety built into that planning.
Because we have a paramedic, a police officer, and our chief sitting on the board of directors, here is a place where you can reach out and touch people that understand your industry, care about your industry, and we're building the network for you.
We are going to be advocates in pushing innovation and technology for years to come on behalf of public safety, so that they get the best advantages of technology as it evolves. That's what FirstNet's goal and objectives are, is to be able to get the tools and the technology to the people, even in the most remote areas.
Success is delivering to public safety the capability they need to save lives, theirs and the public.
So FirstNet is the pipe between, or the strength between the cans. A year ago, I probably would have closed your FirstNet. It's common, but it's going to take a while. I just got a FirstNet device in the mail a week ago. It's working great. FirstNet's managed by ATT. Verizon has spooled up their public safety products as well, so the pipes are there, they're growing. We've got to stay ahead of it, or else we're going to find ourselves in the dust. So what this device brings, and it's really just a cell, this is a cellphone on the FirstNet network, but let's say there's a major incident like the Boston Marathon bombing, people, as soon as something happens, people take pictures, they're text messaging, they're saturating the network, I'm okay. What happens is we start pushing the first responders off the cell networks, and we can't operate. So what this does is FirstNet prioritizes and prevents all other commercial traffic, so that there's never a time, if they have service, that a first responder can't get data, can't get a phone call or a text message through. The other thing it does is it gets data into the field, so as a, like a firefighter extricating a patient out of a car, a hybrid car that has extremely high voltage lines going through it, you can pull up your guide to kind of cut that car part. Has been incidents where you can pull up the first response guide and say, hey, this is ethyl-methyl-bad stuff, and it's breeding a breeding flu. Okay, yeah, it's bad. They can look up the pre-planned guides to mitigate those incidents. But the core of it is, is that none of this happens unless we can get it centralized somewhere, and that's where the rec comes in. They're talking to someone, and that's us. So, we sit in the middle, FirstNet and Next Generation 911, you decide, the public getting talking to the 911 center, and FirstNet with the next generation devices in the hands of responders. So that means we have the, this is the model we're building off of, this is our foundation, and this is what's coming to the regional 911 center from a technology and operations So, just some few things we've done over the past six months. As the next gen 911 system is rolled out, it's, it's got capabilities that have never been explored before. So this is something we just finished up a couple of weeks ago, where we assigned a geographical location to every pole at Gillette Stadium. So if someone's in one of those, you know, giant parking lots and they call 911 from their cellphone, a lot of times we have really hard time, whether it's the telecommunication to Foxborough, we have a tough time saying, all right, what parking lot are you in? And they can't articulate that well. So now, if you call 911 in Foxborough's parking lot, you'll grab the nearest pole, and it'll pop up in the telecommunicator saying, hey, you're in front of pole one, two, three, four, and it'll map. So now we have addressed poles, so this is something we've never been able to do before. We're doing the same thing with colleges, there's two college, major colleges in the district. As it stands today, those colleges may not have street addresses for the individual buildings. We're working with the state and the town to make that happen. That was something that Wheat College, that Easton's led, sorry, Stoned College in Easton. We're doing, we're looking to do the same thing with Wheat. We're taking data that's been in existence for years, like mile markers on a highway, and we're building that data right into the computer-aid dispatch software, so that when you call 911, I can, the telecommunicator can associate you with a mile marker on the highway, better vector in first responders, which doesn't exist today. The mile markers are there, the system has the capability to do it, it just needs to be integrated. And that's getting done. And we're deploying several apps on the FirstNet network, we're using, we're prototyping an application tomorrow, and throughout the week at a concert, we're excited to see how it performs, we're really excited to see if it's going to, I think it's going to work really well. So, these are just some of the, some of the projects we've worked on. We've partnered with Waze. Waze has millions of customers that feed traffic data back and forth. So this is a dashboard I built that says, hey, the telecommunicator can say, all right, Mansfield is transporting a patient to MGH Boston. Click on a button on the screen that says Mansfield and MGH Boston, see where the traffic is, see how long it's going to take to get there. We've monitored traffic coming in and out of the experience center during concerts, same thing with Gillette Stadium. So just tools. Waze says that people report fire incidents six minutes earlier on Waze than they do call 911. So leveraging all the information available, this is something we did for the town of Foxborough, where they said, hey, where are our fire calls? So we threw it on a heat map. You can buy software for $10,000 to do this. We did this as part of the regional 911 district, because we have the tools and the expertise to get this data out. I know that I'm now going to get three more requests from three of our towns to get the same data. And this is another project we're working on. The regional 911 center will be the Bristol County Fire Control, which coordinates all the mutual aid for the entire Bristol County. Right now, they have no way, other than calling each other to say, hey, what's your availability for engine? I have a fire. We're building a dashboard that's updated a lot to say Mansfield is TKO. They can't provide any mutual aid resources because their ladder truck's out of service or something like that, or, you know, some random, another community, and have quick access to see what the status of the entire county is, the street line operation is. And then, like I said, we're deploying apps and testing out stuff with the FirstNet network. Recently, we were awarded and recognized as an ambassador for the National Weather Service as a weather ready nation, which just means we are champions of weather safety information, and like the town of Mansfield is also a storm ready community, which lowers your insurance rates and flood insurance rates. So the rec has also positioned ourselves to continue that legacy and that program, and the National Weather Service has endorsed us as an ambassador. All right, so let's get into meat and potatoes, the budget, the money stuff. Does anyone have any questions about the technology before I jump into the budget stuff?
Hey, Robert.
I just have one.
Sure.
Foxborough's the only town that's not in Bristol County.
Okay.
And it's going to be Bristol County Control. Will also, will all the Norfolk County apparatus be available for Foxborough to see? Because we really don't use Norton in Easton.
Right, so the dashboard is built with the district in mind and the neighboring towns that, we cross boundaries all the time between Bristol and Norfolk and Plymouth. My vision, my hopes is that we build three identical systems that are cross-connected and updated the same way, so hopefully the rec will, you know, kind of be pervasive and leach out to the other counties. and leach out to the other counties. So yeah, I think there'd be a huge collaboration between the county control and Norfolk Department.
Yep, anyone remember enhanced 911?
Say again?
Anyone remember enhanced 911?
Right, this is just the next step. This is the enhancement to enhance 911. This is the next generation of the, this is the next step, the improvement of enhanced 911.
Yep, I read that some articles through the press that Foxborough's been doing it back in 91, in Norton, 2095.
Right.
Yep.
So this is just the next step. Sir?
First, no comment from Mansfield. The FirstNet special, is that a band within 4G LTE, or is that a separate band that you are creating on top of that?
It's both. So it's not a band within a 4G LTE, it's leveraging the current commercial 4G LTE system with preemption and prioritization on the network. So a device designated as a FirstNet device has priority and preemption over our commercial customer. The next phase of that that's being rolled out now is a separate section of spectrum called Band 14, which is dedicated exclusively for 4G and 5G coverage on the FirstNet devices. So when that's rolled out throughout the Commonwealth, which is in the contract, my device will try and look for a Band 14 exclusive carrier for the phone, and if it can, it'll go back to commercial priority and perception to keep that top.
So nationwide, it doesn't need any additional equipment, it's going to use equipment that's already in place?
No, that is all, so with FirstNet, the way this works is that you buy the phone, you subscribe, just like you would at home, the first responder agency says, "All right, ATT manages FirstNet, Verizon has a similar product." Says, "Hey, I want a FirstNet device. This phone is free, they give us this, and then it's a monthly fee, just like a normal cellphone." So this replaces your cellphone plus all those added features at a reduced cost.
Thank you.
Awesome. So grants. This has been spoken about a ton. Each 911 center currently is eligible for a grant through the state, or several grants through the state 911 department. Collectively, the four towns are getting about $190,000 a year. It's about equal as a little bit of disparity between the towns, it's really marginal. So every year, the towns, or P-SAP is eligible for support incentive grant. So as individual towns is $190K, the second we take our first 911 call, we are eligible for an annual grant, same pot of money, but because we're a regional center, that number from one night turns into eight nights. It's a tremendous amount of money, it's a tremendous increase, it's almost a town and a half worth of what we're looking to assess the towns. And that's coming from the state 911 department in perpetuity, it doesn't go away, it's uncompetitive. And it's looking like it'll probably increase over the years. So what that looks like over 10 years is that eight ninety is the top line. So after, after 10 years, we're looking at getting in, and not just that grant, $8 million. Our losses if we don't take that grant money and if the towns continue to operate like we do, that would represent approximately $7 million of loss in grant opportunities. And we would collect as a town over 10 years, or four towns over 10 years, just under $200, $200, oh, sorry, $2 million. So that represents $7 million in grants abandoned over seven, 10 years if the regional center was not established. And this money is, it's taken from the surcharges on phone lines, there are tax dollars involved, that's all service charges, that's, it's money up for grabs for these regional 911 centers, it can't be, or 911 centers in general, it can't be used for anything else. If it's not used here, it's going to be used elsewhere. So it just makes sense to go after this money. And this is in combination with the training grants that are in perpetuity that we're expecting every year, the emergency medical dispatch grants that we're expecting in perpetuity every year, plus the $10 to $12 million we're expecting for development grant, which is the competitive grant we're working under now. So there's a lot of free money, for lack of a better term, available for these programs because it is such a tremendous asset to the public safety and life-saving efforts of the towns. Any questions about the grant? Mr. Parker?
Sorry. I know officially in 2019, the money that wasn't covered by the grant was $204,000, I believe.
Correct.
Do you know what won't be covered next year, seeing as 2019, really you're the only person that's deployed or covered by that grant?
Right.
And what's not covered by the grant?
So this year, we had a modest budget, and it's outside of the development grant. That is to fund insurance for the district, legal services for the district, and just the normal operating cost of being a public entity. It is all working down, it's provided to all boards of selectmen, and I can make it available on the website of how I justified that money in our budget, but we're really conscientious about the way we spend money and what we spend money on. There's really no frills, there is no frills, zero frills involved in that budget. And I know you've seen it, Mr. Parker, but I'd love, I'd be more happy to break that down for anyone who's curious about it.
Is there any projection on what it'll cost for 2021?
Yes, I'll get it right up. So rewind a little bit, Mr. Parker, sorry to not answer your question directly, but this is about what we're spending each year by town on 911 services. So I took the published town report numbers, I reduced them, and then I added 30% for stuff that's not captured in that number for benefits. And 30% for benefits is a really, really conservative number. So I got these numbers. So in reality, each town's paying probably over $1 million easily. So when I go to the grant, I'm building my budget, my operational model, off each town being assessed about 550 to 580,000. So I put the bigger number up there just to be, not to surprise anyone, but so this is a tremendous savings just in annual operating costs, and this is non-grant reimbursable money, so this is after the grants are placed, about 580 per year per town. If we had more towns, there's a bunch of towns that are actually waiting in the wings to come in. We don't have to, every time we add a town, we don't have to duplicate our staff, we can use the staff that's in place, and that number will be further diluted. So that's roundabout, does that answer your question, Mr. Parker?
Yes, thank you.
So that's, that's our projection for assessments from the towns. And then the last thing is the building. I'm actually going to ask, I'm sure we're the PowerPoint for that one. Any other questions about financing?
Can we talk about that through the building discussion?
The, yeah, the finances of building. I didn't put it in, but I can certainly do that when I can ask my question then.
Sure. The boards of selectmen were presenting, just before we took a vote, there was a list by town of what the cost would be. Where does that stand? Just today versus where? So the original CEMR was going to be at West Street.
All right.
And now it looks like it's going to High Rock. Where do these towns stand as far as what the people were told were going to be cost to run that facility versus what they're going to be?
Sure.
I'm getting questions from our constituents.
And that's a, that's a very fair question. So the costs are not going to increase, it's the same 580, that's the cost of town, end of story. There's no other cost.
What about, what about the cost of build outs?
That's all grant-funded.
Every dime.
Every dime is grant-funded. Or grant eligible, the grant covers it.
I want to get, I mean, what guarantees we have, we're going to get it.
The state's meant to commit this to us, we have a written commitment to the project.
I think, I think what's fair to respond to that is that they've already committed $1.5 million to us, and they're well underway to give the rest of the money to us, because they, they see this. I can tell you personally that, in meeting with the 911 staff, that they view this as being one of the rising star operations in the entire state, and that they see this because of how well it's pulling out, how well it's being managed, and how well it's, how well it's being developed in terms of the day-to-day operations and the foreseeable future in terms of looking at the technology use and things like that. So I can tell you that conversation I had with the state 911 director is that they're fully communicative program.
If anybody's going to have any more questions, can you come up here and use the microphone? People at home can't hear the questions that are being asked from the audience. Thank you.
So to speak about a 911 center and the P-SAP, as I like to probably refer to it a couple times. If you think about public safety in general, firefighters have their tools, fire gear, helmets, axes, fire trucks. Police officers have, you know, weapons belts, bulletproof armor, handcuffs, patrol cars. The building is the 911 telecommunicators tool. That combined with the technology in there, that is the heart and soul. We can't answer 911 calls if we don't have a 911 phone in the center. So it needs to operate 24/7, 100%, it needs to be resilient, it needs to be hardened, it needs to be built right. I speak with the police chiefs and fire chiefs all the time, and I use a term called having nine's reliability, something. And if you think about it, something that's 99% reliable, if you expand that over a year, that means that you're anticipating 24 hours of downtime. We want 99.999, five nines reliability, which gets down to minutes of expected downtime. So we need to build it right. That, that comes with a lot of planning and some money. This is going to be a center point for all technology that we just spoke about throughout the district. So this is some of the core kind of values of a 911 facility. NFPA H-1221 is the standard by NFA that dictates what a communication center should have and how resilient it is. Needs to be resilient to floods, fire, storms, attacks, redundant power, connectivity to different towns, meeting office space, training facility, and it needs to be comfortable, really nice to work for the staff. These guys are under tremendous stress at all times, and we need to have a really nice place for them to work. And right now, each one of them is in a 10-plus-year-old facility that was built for one or two people. There's no training facility, bathrooms that are right next to the dispatch desks, and we need to do better for the people that are truly doing the work of the public. Our initial, really the only building available was 50 West Street, it's the current Mansfield Police Station. Great building, beautiful spot, it would have been a fantastic 911 center, but we found another spot that just made a lot more sense. So some core kind of vital statistics about this facility. It's owned by the town of Mansfield, that will continue, but right now it's occupied by the Mansfield Police Station, Mansfield Police Department, which is an issue when you're trying to build a multimillion-dollar 911 center. It's a type 2 and 4 building, which means it's built out of bricks and heavy timber. It's 150 feet above sea level, and it's got approximately 115-foot light-duty radio tower. It's close to meeting NFA standards, but we can't quite get it there. We can't do stuff like put photovoltaic cells or solar panels on the roof to offset our costs. It has higher energy costs just for the sheer fact that we weren't planning on replacing buildings, doing insulation, and bringing the building up to an energy standard that would truly correlate to saving money. And there's a higher construction risk because our assessment can only get as far as being non-destructive and seeing how the building is now without, you know, busting open the walls. This facility to update would involve reinforcing it for seismic resilience, which is required by code, which means we have to pull apart walls and beams, and it goes above my head for engineering, but there's a risk in there that we can't really foresee until we actually get into it, which is acceptable, it's just something that if we can avoid, it'd be a lot better. The other thing is that due to the requirements of this building to get it up to code, we have less money to put into the communications center portion of it. So this is kind of a scaled-down scrubbed-up map of what the center would have. So essentially, we would take the center portion of the building, build it to exactly what we need now space-wise, and if we ever took out another town, we'd have to essentially tear it apart and rebuild it. So that turns into a lot of money and time, complicates operations if we ever took out another town, and people, the other towns are really waiting, waiting in the wings to get to the center because of our reputation thus far. Enter High Rock. It's a facility, it's in the town of Foxborough. It's a former ATT longline site. It was built and commissioned by the ATT corp with the partnership with the Department of Defense. It's built Cold War era, so it's, these tower sites were built across the entire country to, on this telephone, TV, the two most important things in America, and then DUD Communications, which was an active though. We really, they were built so that if a nuclear bomb was detonated near the Cold War era, that these facilities would stay operational, so we continue to have those Department of Defense communications. This facility is rated for 2 PSI overpressure, which is a nuclear detonation between us and Boston, essentially. It's built to standards that we couldn't afford to even touch today. It's got 18-foot, 10,000 PSI concrete walls that are reinforced. This is a center that, like, if I was to find this guy, say, "Hey, design a 911 center," it'd be like this building. And it happens to be in our district, and it happens to be up for grabs, if you will. The other thing is it's got 206-foot heavy, super-heavy-duty microwave tower, and it happens to be the highest point in the district. All these things really lend themselves to being phenomenal candidates for a 911 center. So these are some, some of the good shots of it. So some vital statistics for this facility. It would be owned by the 911 district, it's currently unoccupied, it's been cleaned out, it's been abated of most of the asbestos and those kinds of things that you found in the 60s and 70s. It's a type 1 building, which means it's fire-resistant. There was a fire in the facility, somebody lit, the American Tower Corporation was using it as wreckage stores, somebody lit those wreckage on fire, it put itself out, the fire department knew about it a couple days later. The concrete didn't even sprawl on the building, it's like, it's unbelievable. It's 412 feet above sea level, and it's got that 200-foot heavy-duty microwave tower. We can very easily put, and we're anticipating we would solar panels on the facility to offset our engine costs, it would be a little greener, and we're, every window we put in the facility is going to be brand-new. Every ounce of insulation that's going to be in the building is going to be new because we're going to put it there. We're planning, the plan for that building, if we go there, is to wrap it in a insulating shield, kind of hide all the graffiti that's on it, and insulate the building. Plus those 18, that 18 inches of concrete does a really good job, I guess, too. Right now, the building is, oh, and we meet NFPA standards today without doing a thing to it. It's bulletproof, it's fire-resistant, it just meets those standards without even breaking a sweat. And it's big. We're actually, the initial kind of overview of the thought was that we take down a portion of the building that we didn't need to, not heat and modernize it, and increase our permeable services in the area. So we might, we were planning on multiplying a section of it and dedicating it for expansion. So instead of tearing out what we built and rebuilding it, we'd be able to build, not kind of all, continue operations with our new partners. So this is kind of an overview of the facility. So it's a big open facility, there's column in it, but other than that, it's empty. The concrete looks like it was poured yesterday. This section of the building, I'm not going to sit and work up here, but the section that looks like an L is the portion of the building that we probably look to take down, open up that for windows, and make it a little more comfortable for the people working in it. And this is illustrative of the, just the height difference between the two facilities. So that's the Mansfield facility, since it's about 150 feet above sea level, and it's got a 115-foot tower. That, the basement of the High Rock facility is about 200 feet above the tip of the antenna tower at Mansfield. So at 200 feet, we're at 612 feet. There's nothing really around us that's higher than that. That tower is built to handle those big microwave forms that are about the size of Toyota Tundras, so we really, the technology that replaced that's about this big, so we're not really concerned about overloading the tower. We'd be hard-pressed to overload that tower, so it's a tremendous tool. That lends itself to microwave deployment and radio deployment, which decreases our costs and increases our return on investment. This is, the map on the left is a coverage map, including the four towns and different radio transmitter sites within the town. The blue kind of coloring in the middle is the Mansfield coverage, the green, the big green blob up top is the High Rock site, and it actually extends beyond the Easton site, the bottom right angle there, that just is overlapped by the Easton site, so you can see it. It's incredible. So the right is just a microwave, theoretical microwave path analysis. On the bottom, you can see the elevation, so at the far left is where High Rock is, and the far right is all the way down to the coast in Bristol County. So not much in between here and the coast, so that lends itself to getting radio signals propagated to where we need them to go. And this is another theoretical kind of tool to see where you could put different radio and microwave equipment. The left is the High Rock facility, the green is a good candidate site for placing microwave equipments, which needs direct line of sight. The right is the Mansfield facility, which doesn't really get out of the four towns. It'd be, we'd have to hop different places and add different layers to make that facility work. It could work, it's just High Rock is a lot more organic in the way it deploys its radio systems. The other big thing that was a concern for us is that, this is the High Rock floodplain map. It's not a floodplain, it's too high, there's not, no bodies of water above it, if it rains, it all goes away. The issue with the Mansfield facility is it's right behind a dam, and it's in the lowest part of the district. It's in a floodplain, which increases our cost to be in that building, because we're required to have flood insurance. Plus, even though that the floodplain and the way that the inundation maps show, it'd be safe to have a 911 center there, it's just another thing that, you know, do we really want to have that looming over us at all? Plus the $17,000 here to have $500,000 of floodplain insurance. It wouldn't necessarily disqualify the facility, it's just, we have another site that's not, that's not an issue at all, so why not go with the other site for even just this concern? And this is just a quick parcel map of High Rock, and this is a concern that's been raised, is contiguous to the FCA State Forest. It's private property right now, it'll be district property as soon as it, if we make that deal. It's approximately six acres. It's approximately six acres cut into the state forest property. The water trail kind of goes around it, it doesn't interfere, and we're not looking to exclude people from using that area of the park. We make it, with security and resiliency in mind, we make it, the land that we're not using as valuable as possible. Being good stewards of the forest and our neighbors. And this is a picture of this facility today. It is a nuisance. People break bottles, they blow stuff up, they graffiti, it's a modern urban art experience. The tower is in pristine condition, the facility itself is in pristine condition other than the graffiti. It's got parking facilities, it's got room to develop and grow, and it just really meets, checks a lot of our boxes. Very few negatives, and we did a full analysis. And, I'm reading my time. Does anyone have any questions on this before I get into the...
Oh my gosh, look at that, look at that, radio satellites.
Go ahead, just a second.
No, it's not you. Hi.
What?
I know I asked you before, where it's in the middle of the state forest, it has one access road in, which is the High Rock road. There's only one access for the power. Where it's in a highly sensitive area, there's a septic system, meets state, local standards, is the drinking water, meets state and local standards. What about an environmental impact study, with all the vehicles going up there, the streams that go across the road, all the wetlands that are on both sides of the road, all those things. I know I brought that all up here before. It's just things that I think everybody else needs to know about because it sits in the middle of the state forest. The building may be great, the location is terrible.
So as we've discussed before, the facility itself is nowhere near any, I think we called the pools that are protected, any concept, vermin pools. Vermin pools, it's well outside of that, any offsets. We don't even come close to any standards. From what I'm told, I'm not an expert in this, but we had engineers there, any thresholds that would cause to do a really deep dive on our environmental impact studies. All the underground tanks have been removed and compliance with the very state laws. Any septic system, sewage, water system, we'd have to be in compliance with modern today standards. Plus, we have a duty to have, not like a compliance, but exceeded, to make sure that we're resilient and have clean drinking water at all times. And then we can, you know, use the restroom facilities, no matter what the weather, or the geopolitical climate, or anything else happening in the rest of the world, we need to be operational. So those things will always be there. When we install backup generators, which are required for any PSAP, we're going to have redundant, parallel backup generators that we can almost generate all of our utilities on-site if we have to. And that is extremely desirable for a regional, or a PSAP and a 911 center in general. Plus, we're adding things like solar panels, we're looking at rainwater collection devices and other things like that. The facility, and the road that you speak of, the state just did a tree clearing operation that required an extensive environmental impact study for that, which kind of did a lot of the work and answered a lot of questions that you had regarding vermin pools and streams and wetlands, and none of that was applicable for the tree clearing operation that overtook more than 50 acres of the forest as a forest health project. So we were concerned about that when we went into this. We examined it, and we found that the site is highly advantageous nonetheless. We don't feel like we'd be impacted, we feel like we'd improve the area and be excellent stewards of the forest and the area. Right now, it's a building that just collects graffiti and is a nuisance. Any other questions around the facility?
I want to thank you, thank Rob for his very depth presentation. It was very, very helpful. I have to apologize to you first, I didn't introduce myself when I was aboard, so I'm Bill Keegan, town manager in Foxborough, chairman of the Semerit Board, elected night units, town manager in Norton, across the table, please, Kevin Dumas, town manager in Mansfield, you probably know that, and Carter Reed is the town administrator in Norton and Eastern. And the four of us have been working with Rob over the past several months, coming up with this update and this presentation for tonight. The information that you're seeing tonight, I think is pretty compelling in many ways, this is the why, this is so important for us to do this. The technology that you're seeing, that was discussed earlier tonight, is actually rolling out as we speak. And what's happening is that there are a lot of communities out there who are not ahead of this curve, in fact, they're way behind this curve. I'd like to say that this group is actually pretty far on the front edge of that curve, which is good news for all of us in terms of how we were able to get the information out to our residents and protect our residents at the highest level of public safety. So I want to say to all of you, we really appreciate all of your support, that is to help us put this program together and to serve the collective communities with this kind of new technology that we do in this project. So it will certainly help, happy to answer any questions might have.
Jim DeValles, one of the Foxborough selectmen, thank you for your presentation. Two questions to get from today, to put a shuttle on the ground. What's the process with respect to Semerit, four towns, selectmen, town meeting, maybe, budgets? What's that process?
So being a district, we would have to get involved with going back to the boards of selectmen or town meeting for moving forward the project that can be determined at the district board of directors level, which is a perk of being a district and kind of lends itself to efficiency that way. As far as getting a shuttle on the ground for High Rock or Mansfield, leaning more towards High Rock, for that project, let's speak to that, because I think Mansfield's a little more clear. We need to purchase the property, and by purchase, I mean not on a fee, we're not expecting to spend over, I'll say, $100. It's really small. So we need to close in that deal, which our attorneys and the American Tower attorneys have come to terms and agreed on terms. We just need to vote as a district to accept those and move forward with that. We have the $1.5 million still in the coffers for design and getting that rolling, so we just have to reprogram from Mansfield to, we haven't spent any, so just kicking the architects off in the right direction, saying, "All right, this is our building, let's go." And they're anticipating that as soon as we get the green light, that we're going to roll. And we're going to time that around different, like, both buildings need a roof. We said that it'd be most cost-effective to move that up to September because of all the school projects, and we're going to be competitive in the bidding climate. So that's really it, we just need to say, "Go." And that is a vote away. We met that milestone where we said, "All right, this building is good, our attorneys have come to terms, now the district needs to take action and say, 'All right, we're going here, or we're going to stay in Mansfield.'"
And so you're saying "we," meaning Semerit and the board of directors. So it's a second follow-up. Thank you for putting, I guess you call it feasibility study on your website. So I did look at that, and as Dave said, we're getting questions at the selectmen. So going through that report, I think it's thirty pages, basically three things on it. One was the Mansfield site, majority of that was redacted.
Right. That was redacted by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And just to comment on that...
I'm not challenging, that's fine.
The stuff that was redacted, that was a security sense of information, like the type of pipes we're using, where the fire suppression system terminates, and how the electric comes into the building, just to protect that against any sabotage.
So in the second, I appreciate that. The second part was, a big chunk of it was Foxborough site, tremendous amount of solar bearings and air testing quality, but more of the breaking water. And then the third part was a recommendation, evaluation of the two sites. When I look for a feasibility study, the stuff that you said here tonight, you know, why do we need it? Our technology versus the technology needed today, and maybe the technology needed in the future, combined with the financial from all different towns collaborating together was completely non-existent. This information we have here, are you planning on putting this on one report, and if you want to call it a feasibility report or preliminary report? So we have something to look at. You know, I meant to this presentation before, but there's a tremendous amount of gaps unless you go to all your meetings. But I would say it was a feasibility study, it was more of, here's two sites.
Yeah, that was, that report was just towards the building, because I was, was questioned. There's tremendous amount of data regarding operations and personnel that are going to be very similar to this, maybe boil this down and refine it.
For the selections, and I'm not disagreeing with the information in, but if we could have one document that we could hang our hats on and say, "Yes, we're moving forward to support it," without having to try to find it in different places.
Okay, that's easy. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want us, just one more thing to follow up on, just to DeValles. Just so you know, for three years, I've been trying to get a copy of the feasibility study. I've asked the state, I've asked all four towns, I've asked Semerit for a feasibility study. And Mansfield Police Chief Salmons presented a public meeting, he gave a copy to all town managers, and he gave me a copy. Mr. Keegan, you said you'd give me a copy. It's been three years, I still don't have a copy of the feasibility study. Then I go online for the town of Hamilton, who wants to do a regional dispatch center for Hamilton, Manchester, by the sea, and Denders. They have a 124-page feasibility study that's on their website that maybe everybody should look at. It goes through all the aspects of what they went through before they even thought of moving forward on a project like this. And it's very frustrating because it's been three years, I filled out numerous freedom of information requests, and no one's been able to provide it. So in supporting us to DeValles, where it's now may be great, but how it cut to this point is very questionable.
Sure. So to respond to that, Mr. Parker's requested several times from various different agencies, a tremendous amount of information which was provided to him. To speak to the feasibility study, which I was not involved with, I was on board, I was still in my former job at the time that that study was commissioned and finished. The feasibility study was commissioned with a company, they got 95% of the way there, they developed a draft feasibility study report, and then they went out of business. The study was never finalized in a report form, all the data was collected, and the commission at the time said, "Why are we going to spend our money again to recommission this? We have all the information." They verified it internally, developed a PowerPoint, and presented it to the board. Initially, they commissioned a building study, which was not included and was not finished by that company, which was included in Mr. DeValles's package, which we expanded on with the other building, plus a radio feasibility study, to take those two aspects that were out of the spoke knowledge and expertise of the police and fire chiefs that were on that committee, and button that all together and say, "All right, this is a good project." All that data was provided to Mr. Parker, including the draft reports numerous times. And to say that we didn't provide the data, I think is, I don't think is quite accurate. There's no finalized report, this is a finalized feasibility report. That, I think, really was the presentation and the collective of saying, "Hey, we verified this data." The PowerPoint was pretty extensive in its information that it provided to the towns. And, I mean, this is a pretty, pretty tertiary overview, it was a whole project, but the data's there to support this whole project. And we've gone to a point where this makes more sense than ever before. So to rewind and go back to the Wayback Machine three years and say, question it, I feel you and I hear you, we provided all the data to try and verify that maybe you feel uncomfortable, but it's, we're moving forward, and it's pretty clear why.
I think it's just, it's fair to say that this was not a traditional study in that regard. So in short, as Rob was able to point out, the information that we were, was voluminous. And so there's no shortage of information provided to Mr. Parker at any time. We gave everything we had. The issue that we, the conclusion that we all reached was, it's really made more sense to do. And one of the things that wasn't touched upon, but I think is really important to summarize what, what a fall around this entire project is, is that all the technology, all the information that you see as coming forward in terms of power, we're going to provide radio communications into the future, is all happening right as we speak. The problem with if we stay separate, if we stayed separate, we already made the decision to go forward, so we are already collecting, we do. But if we'd stayed separately, on our own, we would have had all paid, had to pay for that independently on our own for the upgrades of that information and the technology just to provide. And I dare say, we probably would have had quite a more, more personnel development process. So what you're not, what you're seeing right now is the cost, is the cost are today, but the cost of what it would have been are even higher than the savings we're going to generate with the report that Rob just gave. So I think that the opportunity cost is much higher than that of what is, what the actual numbers are. So I think, I'm really, really quite pleased with where we've come. I think it's a really important step forward for all four communities. Rob has put together a really, really well-done website that he'll leave for you, before we go to leave tonight. And it's really important that people have questions on that, we will provide that information to them on the website as our means of informational, yeah, informational dispersion. But I also think it's important, too, that, you know, for the town of Foxborough, if this is being double-ized tonight, we're taking a copy of this and then bring it back and provide it for our citizens as well. And for any of the other communities, Norton and Eastern, we certainly want to provide it to you as well, so you can all go out with your residents to see. Because this information is extremely important, so you all understand that this is a very, very good project. Any other questions before we wrap things up? Yes?
Hi, I'm Donnie Fulgenetti, Chair of the Eastern Board of Selectmen. And there were only two of us of our five-member board that were on board with this when it started. So I just want to say that, you know, it was really cutting-edge at the time, nobody else was doing it, it was a big risk for us to take a vote like that, and I feel even more confident tonight, the technology that we're looking at tonight is far superior than we were even talking about a year ago. So I think that you're doing a great job, I think you've made an excellent hire as the executive director, and it makes me feel confident in the vote that I took a year ago, that we're going in the right direction. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bob Kimmel from Norton. The thing that I love about this is the cost factors. And being on the other end of the soup, like, we are, it's right out, it works. We've improved it, it can work, it will. Saving money is what it's all about, because all of us are trying to do, I think, this in small towns. And as we get into this, I know I'm getting way ahead of myself, but as we get into this, the technology that you're going to have to work with, that should branch out all these four departments, and we have the same, we have the same type of technology, I mean, any department, no matter where you go, what you're going to do, you can go into a vacuum vehicle, and then where it came from, pick up the information, and use the same type of equipment, know how to use it, and we can buy it together and save, and save additional money on top of it. So I think this is just the beginning of a, no good possibility, it can happen. At the same time, to your point, the building itself, we had to build that for us, we can't imagine what the cost to build it. And as the official said, go, build it, and they will come. I think you will see other communities look at what we're doing and say, "We want to be a part of that, too." And then hopefully our cost will, but not because. The guy's doing a great job. I love the new concept, the new ideas, the new plant, I think is the best place to put it. It's somewhat isolated, I get it. You have to work on neighbors, it doesn't defeat, you have to work on community neighbors, which is a plus, because we all know when we try to do something, somebody backs you out, it becomes a problem. So I think overall, this is the best solution, and you're able to control it, seeing how much we can do and how much we can save.
Thank you very much, thank you.
So I think you raise a very important point, which all of us talk about on a regular basis, is the regionalization of services. And we already have a successful model in the MFN, and it actually, Eastern's joining part of it as well, so it's all four communities that are involved in that. But there are multiple opportunities that we talk about all the time, about regionalization. Dispatch is just another one, but, you know, we talk about the way we can purchase equipment together. I know the fire chiefs and police chiefs talk about it all the time, with their staffs and the tenants and the deputy chiefs talk about how they can serve shared services. That's the reality of today, and that's going to be the reality tomorrow. I think that if we're able to do that collectively and work on these things collectively, we're going to be much more successful overall. I would thank you all very much.
I'm just following the point, though, but I want to make sure to reference for everybody. I really appreciate the fact that all of our police and fire personnel from our four respective municipalities, especially, you know, over the past six, seven months, have been coming to all of our meetings, have been participating, and it's nice to be able to see all of them cooperating and working together for the best interest and believing in Semerit and looking what we're able to do here. And I just want to make sure that we recognize all of their help throughout this process as well.
Thank you, Tim, that's a great point. And I absolutely agree that that's, this has been a cooperation, it's the best example of cooperation I've seen in any project. I want to thank you all very much for your attention tonight, we appreciate your involvement in this project, and I have a great day.
Thank you. Any other questions, you sure? So, okay?
I can't take one. I'm going to take one.